Ladies and gentlemen, before we begin, please turn off your cell phones or use the silent feature. Please note that today's hearing is being livestreamed on YouTube as part of a pilot project. Welcome. In accordance with Section 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustments for the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustments considers applications for minor variances for the provisions of the zoning bylaw, permissions to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consents to create new laws. Hearing procedure. To ensure a fair and timely hearing, I will vet the agenda to determine which applications can be dealt with immediately and which applications require more in-depth review. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda and ask if anyone other than the agent or applicant is present in interest. If there are people present in interest, the matter will be held until all non-contested applications have been cleared from the agenda. If your item is held, we strongly advise you to meet with the interested parties outside of the hearing room to resolve any outstanding issues. If no person is present in interest, the agent or applicant will proceed with their presentation if required. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into the committee for a decision. Making your submissions. Each speaker, including the agent or applicant, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. When addressing the committee, please come forward to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and file a decision request card so that we have correct information for our records. I believe the decision request cards are available at the end of this horseshoe on this side. If you have a written submission that you read from, please hand it in to Deputy Secretary Treasurer when you are done, who is seated on my left-hand side. First, the applicant or agent will make the presentation to the committee of the application as submitted. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be allowed to speak. If there are several speakers sharing the same view, please select a spokesperson to present the group's opinion. We want to hear your views, however, covering the same issues or points will not advance your cause. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker at the end of this submission. When all speakers are finished, the applicant has an opportunity to rebut only the related issues that were raised. The matter will then be taken into the committee for a decision, and this will mark the end of all discussion. Please remember to confine your comments to the matters outlined in the application. If you do not agree with the committee's decision, you may file an appeal. Almost all appeals will be dealt with by a tribunal called the Toronto Local Appeal Body, or T-Lab. For more information on the T-Lab, please visit their website or the CofA website. Appeal instructions will be included at the bottom of every decision. In order to receive a copy of the committee's decision and to be informed of all appeal proceedings, you must fill out the decision request card referred to earlier. Please include your email address, as T-Lab will be sending notifications via email. Please leave your completed form with, once again, Deputy Secretary Treasurer or a member of her staff before leaving today, and decisions will be mailed within three business days. Okay, now proceed with declaration of interest. Panel members or staff members, are there any declarations of interest for this time slot? Okay, no? So please note that the committee will not be entertaining any extensive revisions to the applications at the hearing today. In the instance that you do have extensive revisions, we will defer the applications to ensure that the revisions are accurate and that all interested parties are informed of decisions. Are there any agents or applicants who would like to defer the applications or who have any extensive revisions to their applications at the hearing today? Okay, so I'll proceed with vetting the agenda. Item number 22, 245 Sterling Road, do we have the agent or applicant here? Okay, do we have any interested parties for 245 Sterling Road? No. Item number 23, 917 Austington Avenue, agent or applicant? Okay, do we have any interested parties? Okay. Okay, so 917 Austington Avenue, the item will be held. So once again, we strongly advise you to step outside to discuss any outstanding issues. Item number 24, 75 Shalmar Boulevard, agent or applicant, do we have any interested parties? Twenty, sorry, 75 Shalmar Boulevard. Item number 25, 48 Delaware Avenue, agent or applicant? Okay, do we have any interested parties? 45 Delaware Avenue? No. Item number 26, 55 Hazelton Avenue, agent or applicant? Okay, do we have any interested parties? 55 Hazelton Avenue? Item number 27, 50 Madison Avenue, agent or applicant, do we have any interested parties? By heritage or planning. You're aware of that? Okay. So 50 Madison, do we have an interested party? Okay, so once again, we strongly advise you to step outside to discuss any outstanding concerns. I'm not sure if the agent has saw that there is a party opposing the application, so that will be held. Item number 28, 6 Hume Wood Drive, agent or applicant? Any interested parties? 6 Hume Wood? 29, item number 29, 3 London Street, agent or applicant? 3 London Street? Yep. Okay, do we have any interested parties? Item number 30, 96 Squires Avenue? Squires Avenue? Agent or applicant? Okay, do we have any interested parties? 96 Squires Avenue? No. Item number 31, 122 MacPherson Avenue? Agent or applicant, do we have any interested parties? Okay, so that item will be held as well. So strongly advise you to step outside, and that, once again, that is the end of the time slot. So the items that are being held include: Item number 23, 917 Austington Avenue. Item number 27, 50 Madison Avenue is being held. Item number 31, 122 MacPherson Avenue is also being held. So now we'll proceed with item number 22, 245 Sterling Road. If we can have the agent or applicant, please come up. So before you proceed, the committee has in front of us Plan of Survey, Site Plan, Floor Plans Elevations. If you can, please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Tom Besai. I am the architect and agent for the owners of 245 Sterling Road.
Okay, so because there are only two variances, I'm going to proceed with questions rather than the presentation, unless the committee members want a presentation. Okay, panel members, do you have any questions?
No questions.
I just have a question, in terms of the existing FSI, because it was very difficult to read the the site statistics.
Sorry, what was the question?
What is the existing FSI?
The existing is around a point six, of point six seven lot coverage, and the maximum for that zoning is point six nine.
Okay. Okay, panel members, any other questions?
You're saying that the existing FSI is point six seven?
Yeah, it's really close to the current allowable. We're asking for zero point nine nine, so we're asking for a little bit.
Do you think it is point six seven? We're looking at a 50% increase?
Well, we're at a, for one, like, in keeping with the kind of context of this neighborhood, very, very small houses in four-shortened lots. So the rear yards of the houses along this side of Sterling Road on the east side are quite short because there's an infringement of adjacent buildings. So we're in a situation where the lot to the north has a slightly longer rear yard, the lot to the south slightly shorter. So in order to make a kind of useful addition at the back, we're maintaining all of the new construction to the rear yard. We're matching the kind of rear limit of the addition to the neighboring house, the attached neighbor. So we're basically bringing it out as far as the adjacent building only. What that presents is, so, and it's a very modest addition in area. So whereas the existing area is 57 square meters, we're going up, we're adding 33 square meters. So we're going up to a total of whatever that makes. Yeah, a 90.3. So what that constitutes is a fairly modest addition when it comes to, because the house is so small to start with, the addition is in fact quite modest. So there's a master bedroom on the second floor, an extension to the kitchen on the main floor.
Okay, any other questions? No more questions, we're in committee discussion or motion?
This is, I think, entirely appropriate, even with the addition, it's still the smallest house we've...
Okay. Is that a motion?
I would just say I would agree with Mr. Carlson. There are several homes that are much longer, there's commercial industrial behind, and it's appropriate.
I agree, and also, as the agent mentioned, the configuration of the lots, they do get smaller as you head south, I believe. Okay, any other comments? If not, then your motion?
Approval of the application, as I believe to be minor in nature and appropriate for development of the site.
Okay, a motion to approve has been moved by Mr. Carlson, second by Omen, all in favor? So the application's been approved, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 23 is being held. Item 24, 75 Shalmar Boulevard. The committee has in front of us Plan of Survey, Site Plan, Floor Plans Elevations. We have the cover letter from the agent. We also have a staff report from Urban Forestry and three form letters and support from 64 Shalmar, 72 Shalmar, and 52 Rich Hill. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, members of committee. My name is Michael Goldberg, I'm a planning consultant representing the applicant.
Okay, panel members, would you like a presentation or proceed directly with questions? We'll go directly into questions.
May I say one thing? I have, the adjacent owner, Ms. Marlo Ayn is here. She's in support of the variances being requested. But she has requested that this, in terms of arrangement as between the owners, be filed with the committee. Would you mind if I filed that piece of paper?
Sure. So what, does this affect any of the variances? Is this a condition on the variances? No?
These are assurances that after the approval of the minor variances application, that construction will be undertaken in a certain way.
Okay, sure, you can file them with us.
I have three pieces.
Okay, you know, perhaps you can go through it very quickly in terms of what the agreement was. You don't need it? Perhaps you can go through them very quickly in terms of what the agreement was?
This arises because of the variance to the west side yard. And you could see in the first bullet that they want an independent survey undertaken, that, two, the second bullet, that if shoring is required, there will be consultation as between the engineers. The third bullet is that if it's deemed necessary, there'll be vibration monitoring when there's excavation close to the house. And number, the fourth, talks about groundwater in relation to the foundation excavation. And the fifth relates to standard insurance for the contractor. So these are private arrangements. We're not here asking the committee to impose them as conditions or anything, but we're, we are, I had undertaken to file them with the committee, and I'm pleased to do so.
Okay, sounds good. Panel members, do you have any question in regards to the variances? Okay, so I believe we have no questions. We do have the cover letter, which was very useful in terms of providing examples in the neighborhood of FSI, as well as explaining the various variances and the existing conditions. Panel members, no questions? Okay, if there are no questions, we're in committee discussion.
I think this is truly a minor, this application. And I would be prepared to move for acceptance of this application.
Including forestry condition?
Including forestry condition.
Okay, so a motion to approve, including the forestry condition, has been moved by Mr. Russell. Do we have a second there? Second by Mr. Carlson, all in favor? So the application's been approved, thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Item number 25, 48 Delaware Avenue. The committee has in front of us Plan of Survey, Site Plan, Floor Plans Elevations. We also have three images depicting the urban design, rear perspective, and shadow study. If you can please introduce yourself.
Hi again, Tom Besai, Denegri Besai Studio. I am the agent representing the owners of 48 Delaware.
Okay, so because you have only two variances, we'll proceed with questions rather than the presentation. Panel members, do you have any questions?
No questions.
I just want to find from Mr. Besai, the depth, variance number two, you have a depth of, requirement is 70 meters and you have 22.15 meters. How does that affect the rest of the neighborhood?
Okay, the, so the building depth is 22.1 meters. So that means that we're adding, we're adding approximately five meters of depth to the building. In keeping with the character of the neighborhood, we really were attempting to put all of the work that's going to be done on the addition of this house in the rear. So the character of the street is not affected by the renovation. At the rear, the house that's adjacent to this one to the south extends to a similar depth. And the character of the neighborhood around Delaware in this area are, it's characterized by slightly larger houses that have, many have rear elements protruding into the rear yards that are consistent with, or deeper than the one that we're proposing. So we were very interested in keeping it in context, we've done that. We also were taking measures to make sure that the extension in the rear does not affect the northern neighbor. And so we've done, we've submitted shadow studies that demonstrate that because of the massing of the building that we're proposing at the back, we've shifted it slightly to the south in order to allow full sun to radiate onto the rear yard of the building to the north. So we feel like we've taken quite consistent measures across the zoning bylaw in order to accommodate the kind of context and the neighboring buildings.
Okay, panel members, do you have any other questions? Okay, we have no more questions, so we're in committee discussion or motion?
Through you, Madam Chair, this is indeed minor. Both adjacent homes are approximately the same length as what's being proposed here. So I would move approval of the applications as it meets the four tests, fits within the character of the neighborhood.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen, do we have a second there? Okay, second by Mr. Carlson, all in favor? So the application's been approved, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 26, 55 Hazelton Avenue. The committee has in front of us Plan of Survey, Site Plan, Floor Plans Elevations. And then we have a staff report from Heritage Services. If you can please introduce yourself.
My name is Ida Evangelista. I'm here on behalf of the owners of 55 Hazelton Avenue.
Okay, panel members, would you like a presentation or go directly into questions?
Go directly into questions.
Okay, we'll go directly into questions. Sure.
Listen, Angel, Angelista.
Evangelista.
Evangelista.
It's a mouthful.
I guess it's like Warwick. Variance number two, we are looking at depth.
Right, okay, so most of the, a lot of these variances are due to the existing situation. So the only change that we have, so what we're doing is, we're just filling in the northeast corner on each floor. And on the third floor, we're adding an additional 8.73 square meters. So the existing, the height remains, the length remains, and all we are doing is just bumping out that small portion at the northeast corner.
But you're now into a depth of extra three meters in the back. The extent, the variance number two shows that you're extending three meters to the back.
Well, right now, our house is currently 18, or 19.68 meters. The house is currently 19.68 meters.
It's an existing condition.
It's an existing condition, sir.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah. So if, so I guess the drawings are not numbered, but if you look at the site plan for for first floor, you will see that the length of the existing property and then where the addition is being added. Okay, any other questions? Okay, no other questions, we're in committee discussion.
Is there a heritage?
There is a standard heritage condition.
And we are aware of it, yes, and we're accept, acceptance of it.
I think this is truly minor in nature and have no significant impact on the character or on neighbors. So I approve, including the heritage condition.
Okay. So a motion to approve, including the heritage condition, has been moved by Mr. Carlson, second by Omen, all in favor? So the application has been approved, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 27 is being held, so we move forward to item number 28. 6 Hume Wood Drive, sorry. So 6 Hume Wood Drive, so we have a Plan of Survey, Site Plan, Floor Plans Elevations. We have a decision, CofA decision affecting the subject property. And then we have two correspondents in support from 8 and 4 Hume Wood. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name is Andrew Turkan. I am an architect and agent on behalf of the owner. What we are doing here, just changing the shape of the roof and adding a gable wall on the west side. And other than that, there are no changes whatsoever. And as you can see on the, on the survey, and there was some issues on the south side because we were too close to the border, eaves in the building. But it's the existing situation, we are not touching to this part. Neither any of the part, actually. Eaves are not moving, and just changing the shape of the roof. But changing of the roof, it just, we are moving, we are building a wall on the same line, first and second floor. It changes the depth of the third floor, which, that's why we are here. And other than, there are no changes.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions? Okay, no questions? So you're saying the variances are already existing conditions, then?
Most of it.
Yeah, including the depth.
Just changing the roof, we are just changing the roof.
Okay, panel members, then if there's no more discussion, I'll need a motion? Or if there's no more questions, a discussion or a motion?
I'd move for approval of this application, that it's truly minor. If that just changes the roof, blue cars changes.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Mr. Russell, do we have a second there? Okay, Mr. Carlson, all in favor? So the application's been approved.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number 29, 3 London Street. The committee has in front of us Plan of Survey, Site Plan, Floor Plans Elevations. We have the cover letter from the applicant. We have a staff report from Urban Forestry and correspondence in support from 5 London Street, as well as correspondence opposition from 852 Bathurst Street. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon. My name's Willie Wong. I'm a professional engineer, also applicant on behalf of the owner.
Okay, because we only have two variances, we'll proceed with questions rather than the presentation. Okay? Panel members, do you have any questions? So you're, so it's mostly interior changes to put in a second dwelling unit, and then you're just reconstructing or constructing a rare first-story deck?
Madam Chair, you allow me, the existing house, right now, is a six-bedroom. The owner, Dr. Wong, bought it last year. I believe the people are probably renting each individual room. But Mr. Wong, or Dr. Wong, want to change to two nice family dwelling unit. And so the committee approve. He would spend money to rent away and go to Building Department to compile today's building code and fire code requirement. I think better for the neighborhood and better for safe the tenant.
Okay.
They, I want to address, the deck was, if you look at the survey, the existing was a stair there. They use as exit, the rear exit. It's a legal non-conforming. So it's in very deteriorated condition. So what the owner just want to, rather than just repair the stair, they make an open deck, and then the stair goes down. The original stair already encodes on the existing rear yard. Respect to the parking, most tenants, you know it, in this area is, they don't drive. The most tenant is a student, or walk in the downtown. I understand even the city of Toronto today, they permit downtown condo, zero parking requirement because encourage people using public transit.
And it's across from the Bathurst subway station.
Thank you.
Mr. Wong?
Yeah.
What's the problem with the garbage bin?
Sorry, sorry.
What is the problem with the garbage bin?
The garbage bin, what garbage bin?
Some guy wrote a letter to say that you're...
I think they, I replied to that guy, I think they refer to previous owner. I think they tried to rent it for room, so he was questioning, but I think I saw that you, he also questioned, is this for rooming house or not? So I replied, no, they make a two-nice dwelling unit, compiled with a building code, compiled with the fire code. I think would be better for the neighborhood.
Okay, any other questions?
No other questions.
Okay, so no other questions, discussion or motion?
Through you, Madam Chair, I think this is indeed minor. And again, as you mentioned, there's a subway station across the street, so parking is not an issue. I would be prepared to move approval, including forestry number two.
Okay, so a motion to approve, including the forestry condition, has been moved by Ms. Omen, do we have a second there?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell, all in favor? So the application's been approved.
Thank you very much.
Item number 30, 96 Squires Avenue. The committee has in front of us Plan of Survey, Site Plan, Floor Plans Elevations. We have a CofA and OMB decision affecting the subject property, sorry, adjacent property at 98 Squires Avenue. We have a cover letter from the agent, we also have a staff report from committee planning, and then we have correspondence and support from 94 and 98 Squires Avenue. So directly adjacent neighbors. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself.
My name's Nicholas Sancho. I'm representing the owner.
Did you remove variance number three?
Yes, so it was sent in, in time to, it was sent to Daniel at the Committee of Adjustment desk in time. According to him, so we eliminated number one, number three, and number six.
Number one, three, and six.
I have, I have that noted here if you'd like it.
I have it. Sorry, number one, number three, and number six?
By removing these, does it affect your FSI in any way?
Yes, it does, it does, it reduced, it reduced number two and it reduced number four.
Can you just go through it? I know it's in the letter, but we need you to
Yeah.
state it here.
Yeah, so number two, you need to know the numbers, the reduction with the number two.
So we've gone down to 40.5%, which is 150.24 meters squared.
150.24.
Meters squared, yeah.
Number, number four, we've reduced down to 0.68, which is 253.14 meters squared.
253.
253.14, yes. And number five and number seven are remaining the same.
Okay, so perhaps you can explain to us how you got the various numbers and what you, the changes are? Since we got the letter this morning, so we
Oh, okay.
necessarily have the right. And you also, you got the revised plan. So if you can just quickly go through the changes?
Okay, so basically, we met with Keisha, the planner, and we had some discussions. We discussed the rear and so on and so forth, and we made the agreement that we were gonna, we shrunk the house slightly. So we, we went from the seven variances by shrinking it about two feet, 0.6 meters. We could eliminate three variances without really affecting much of the design. And that's what we ended up with. And that was satisfactory to the planning department as well.
Right, so you're basically matching the recommendations in the planning report dated November 1st. Okay, any other questions?
Madam Chair, I think having removed those other variances, that I'm quite satisfied with the changes. And I would be prepared to move a motion for acceptance of the amended application. Variance two will now read 40... forty percent at one hundred, one hundred and fifty point two-four meter square.
Oh, yeah, it's forty point five percent?
Forty point five percent. Variance, um, four will now read, um, point six-eight times area of the lot and that will give us two hundred and three point one-four meter square. And all the other variances remain the same that are...
Deleted as well?
And, and we delete, oh, we are deleting variance one, three, and six. And the other variance remain the same.
Okay.
Um, will you be attaching the, um, because the revised plans are attached to the staff report, correct? Are you gonna tie them to the plans that are attached?
Yes, yeah, revised, probably the staff.
Then I would second the motion.
Okay, so tie it to plan. Okay, so a motion to approve, including the amended application, um, including attaching it to the plans. Attached to the staff report dated November first, has been moved by Mr. Russell. Do we have a second there? Second by Ms. Omen, all in favor? So the amended application has been approved.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we move forward with the contested items in this time slot.
Ready?
So I'm not sure who's here in the hearing room, uh, but do we have the agent applicant for item number twenty-three here? For nine seventeen Austington Avenue? No? Okay, so I'll just proceed with the next item. Item number fifty, fifty Madison, sorry, item number twenty-seven, Fifty Madison Avenue. Do we have the agent applicant here? For Fifty Madison Avenue? No? They're still outside? And then... And how about thirty-one? Do we have the agent applicant here? Oh, they're still outside as well? Okay. Okay, so we'll proceed with Fifty Madison, oh, unless the other... Let's see if, uh, item number twenty-three, nine seventeen Austington Avenue, agent... Okay, so we'll proceed, we'll go in the order listed on the public notice. Uh, so if you can have the agent applicant, please come up, as well as the parties who are in interest of the application. If there's any people left to be seated on my left-hand side? No? Okay, so before you proceed, I'll just mention, um, what the committee has in front of us. So we have, uh, plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a set, ten sig- a signature petition in support from various occupants and owners on Austington Avenue, including the directly adjacent neighbor at nine fifteen and nine nineteen. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself?
Yes, good afternoon, members. My name is Victor Hippolito. I appear before you as agent of the subject property. I did step outside to meet with one of the area residents at one fifty-seventh Essex. And Mr. Simpson is satisfied with the application he has left. Further to add to some of the material that you may have, I believe you also have an email from sometime in, in July from City Planning indicating they had no objections to this proposal. I can provide you a copy of that email.
Sure, if you can, actually, yeah, if you can, because I, I don't believe we have it on file, so if you can file it with me, that would be great. Okay, panel members, because there are only three variances and there are no parties contesting the application, we're just gonna go directly into questions, okay?
Very good.
Uh, panel members, do you have any questions? No questions?
Parking spaces. Why don't you need parking?
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, we cannot provide parking as this site has not, does not have access to parking. During our investigation, we did a review, uh, and there is permit parking available in this area known as area number three. From the six hundred and five available parking spaces, four hundred and eighty-five have been issued, and there's still a hundred and twenty spaces available to be issued. That's twenty percent of the street parking. So this site is, has availability for street parking. Also, it is on a major public transit route. In fact, there is a, a bus stop directly in front. Five minutes walk from the Blurr subway station. Uh, it's an area that's very well serviced by public transit, which I think falls into some of the OP guidelines in regards to additional density and, uh, creation of housing. So we're creating some valuable housing in an area where presently exists quite a few of these type of projects. In fact, right next door, this used to be at one time a retail store. It was converted about fourteen years ago or so. The one next door a- and this one. So we, we find that this is in keeping with the general intent of the bylaw, and it does respect the general character of the neighborhood.
Uh, I was just wondering, what is happening in the basement?
The basement is, is vacant space. It is not interconnected with the rest of the building. There is no plans to convert, if you were to ask me that question. It has a approximate height of six feet. And it, the basement is strictly used for the mechanical system and some sto- storage.
Okay, uh, panel members, any other questions? You might only, like, I, I understand there's no variances for this, but my concern is actually with unit number two and two hundred and forty-three square foot, uh, studio. Can you just speak to that?
It is, uh, uh, when you first think about it, you consider it to be small. I visited the site, we, and our assessment in regards to building code requirements. It meets the code requirement. It is occupied unit, that unit, that's the front unit, by the building owner. And he is planning to stay in the premises, uh, for quite some time. Uh, it does provide desirable housing. There's a need for those size units. So it has great light coming through, through the front facing west. It's been very well done, actually.
Okay. Okay, panel members, any other questions? Okay, if there are no more questions, discussion or emotion?
I, through you, Madam Chair, I think that what's being proposed is, is reasonable. There's a lot of residential around this site. It looks like the site hasn't really been used at great, so this might be an improvement in terms of use. And as far as the parking is concerned, um, I don't have an issue with it. As was mentioned, there is public transit on, on this road, so I would be prepared to move approval.
Okay, uh, so you can go ahead, seems like there's no other discussion?
Through you, Madam Chair, I believe this meets the four tests, fits within the character of the neighborhood, and I would move approval of the application.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a second there? Okay, Mr. Carlson, all in favor? So the application has been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, members.
Item number fifty, Fifty Madison Avenue, sorry, item number twenty-seven, Fifty Madison Avenue. Same thing. So if we can have the agent applicant, please come up, as well as the parties in interest. Be seated on my left-hand side. So the committee has in front of us, plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have a staff report from community planning, as well as urban forestry and heritage preservation services. And then we have correspondents in opposition from, um, from the Annex Resident Association, as well as, uh, two, I was, I believe it's unit two, Fifty Madison Avenue. And if you can please just give us, introduce yourself and give us a short presentation. And we, we also have, uh, deferral requests both from Heritage and Planning.
I'm gonna grab my copy of the...
Sure. So before we talk about the variances, we'll speak to the deferral requests, okay?
Yes, hi, I'm Angus Skeen. I'm the architect and agent for the proposal at Fifty Madison. Uh, and yes, if you'd like me to express our opinion on the deferral request, we do not want to defer the application. We are more than happy, after working with Robert Ursini at Planning, to concur with his recommendation regarding the permeable pavers to address the soft landscaping issue. Uh, Robert concurred with Heritage's request for the deferral. Uh, he did so as a sort of secondary activity, very late in a week-long series of conversations. So I'd like to think Planning's priority was the soft landscaping. Heritage seems to be, uh, expressing a sort of, just a common interest in activities. Regarding the deferral, I want to be super, super clear here. Heritage, this is not a listed building. This is not a designated building. Heritage has structured all their correspondence very cleverly, but they are not telling you that the Heritage Conservation District does not have force of law due to it being appealed in the courts right now. I can present my zoning, uh, review, which is a zoning certificate. You will see that there is no applicable law of Heritage or the Heritage Conservation Act, or the Ontario Heritage Act, on this proposal. If you read Heritage's correspondence, you will see it's very cleverly written. It'll say council-approved Heritage Conservation District, which is fine, council can approve it. But just like the old bylaw, while it's tied up in the courts, it has no force of law. Heritage then goes on as a basis for their deferral request to cite the official plan. This is not development under the Development Charges Act. I don't think it even qualifies as development under the Planning Act. This is a very small, existing, legal, three-unit house. We are not engaged in site plan approval. I don't think we would be subject to this official, well, I certainly know I'm not a subject to this official plan citation, uh, simply in the act of getting a building permit. The, the one that I'm being cited by, Heritage is requesting the deferral using the official plan by saying, oh, there's a listed property next to you. In a sense, from our end, Heritage is trying everything they can to buy six months of time, during which, should they wish to pursue us, I'm quite sure, they would simply create, within their own system, an intention to designate the property. That would tie us up under the Ontario Heritage Act and put us under the jurisdiction of Heritage. It's happened to me before. I don't want it to happen here. That's our attitude to the deferral request. Heritage can always appeal an approval here today to T-Lab.
I just have a, I have a question. So you mentioned, uh, the justification that Heritage Preservation was using in terms of referencing the official plan policy, three point one point five-five, which speaks to the proposed alteration adjacent to a Heritage property?
Correct.
And the fact that they will ensure the integrity of the Heritage property's cultural heritage value and, uh, attributes?
Yes.
And, and just reference that, one of our decision-making criteria is that the general intent and purpose of the city's official plan are maintained. So can you just cover that again in terms of...
Yeah, sure.
How you would see the reference being made in Heritage Preservation, uh, report and the official plan versus, uh, how you see it?
Yeah, I would say that the only reason we're engaging with the official plan is because we've come here under minor variance requests under the Planning Act, which brings us out of the Building Code Act and into the Planning Act. In a sense, the Heritage citation there, it's true, it's also discretionary, and it's, it's open to interpretation. It's, essentially creates a conversation between ourselves and the Heritage Department. It's a conversation I could avoid altogether by eliminating the variances I'm looking for. I think if you examine the variances we're looking for, and I can assure you hopefully today, I can eliminate probably all of them. And the official, this business of the official plan would cease to enforce on us. So I already see the official plan citation as a bit of a stretch on their part. And it, you know, should they push us, we'll simply continue with our project regardless.
Okay, so we'll have, uh, panel members, do you have any questions?
Um, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I heard you say something earlier about that you were working with Heritage in some ways, but can you just speak to the three things they've listed here, which really isn't so much about the variances, it's more about the material...
Correct.
The width of the door?
Yep.
And how it fits in from a character perspective, which is actually within our jurisdiction?
Yeah, no, it's fine. Um, you have to, like, from my, I haven't worked with Heritage. I said I'd worked with Robert Ursini, who's the assistant planner handling the planning report. What Heritage is looking for is what they would have if the Conservation District was in force. In the Conservation District study, Fifty Madison is written explicitly, and I have a copy of the study, as a property of no interest. It's about fifty years past the primary dates they're interested in, and it's a kind of, it's like anything you'd find in Leeside, right? But if they had Conservation District control, they would like us to mimic materials and to some extent horizontal lines, et cetera, from the building next door. I would say that there's nothing wrong with what we're proposing in terms of a modern infill building. It'll certainly be a huge improvement over what is there. If I was forced by law, I'm sure the owner would perhaps consider working with Heritage. But as the owner right now is just trying to obey the laws that do apply, and also trying to obey the law of supply and demand and what the market desires as a landlord, we're working towards that. I don't see it as a legal requirement, and I, I, I don't see it as a necessity at this point. And frankly, I think the building we're proposing is a very handsome, small building, and an excellent piece of infill.
Do you have a, uh, architectural rendering of your property?
No, all you've got is the architectural drawings that would have come in. I mean, it's a relatively simple, eh, there's these little urban townhouses that have been going up for the last decade downtown. It's essentially that. They're kind of boxy, they're kind of square, the windows are large.
Okay, uh, so now we'll have you sit down, unless there's any other questions from the panel members?
And just to let you know, my little document I gave you, I'm more than happy to talk about the actual variances.
Which we'll talk about once we decide if...
No problem.
There's a deferral or not.
Thanks.
Okay, so we'll have the adjacent neighbor or the party in interest come up, introduce themselves and their address?
I'm Zachary Pryor. Uh, my address is Fifty Madison upstairs. I'm simply here to raise concerns based on, um, the purpose of this committee. And those are to look at the variances being proposed, the desirability of it, and the impact to the surrounding area.
Okay, so before we cover that, so now we're just covering the deferral. Uh, so allowing Heritage to study this property and to work with the agent and the owner to adjust the design of the proposed development to be more in meeting of the adjacent properties. So how do you feel about the actual deferral?
So again, I think it would be valuable. I don't necessarily, again, I, I'll leave that really to, to the Heritage and to the owner to work through what would be the best-fitting sort of look and feel for the neighborhood. The only thing I can point to is that, as I walk up and down the street on a daily basis, there are no other houses of the sort. Every house maintains that same red brook, uh, red brick and sort of historical charm that would no longer be in place based on the, the drawings that I've seen, although like you, I have not seen renderings to fully support that.
Okay, sounds good. So for now, we'll discuss the deferral. And if we do decide to proceed with, uh, with the application, then we'll bring you up again to discuss the actual variances and, and the four decision-making criteria.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, panel members, do you have any questions? Okay, so if we can have the agent, please come up again. Um, no questions to the agents? Nope.
There, there was a decision that Heritage came in, I think it was made, did you get that, I picked that from?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, it was sent out, uh, Heritage, when they, when they have made a, a request that, uh, it was a T-Lab decision. Have you seen that decision?
Regarding which property?
Um, I can't remember. I don't remember right offhand, and I should have had that here.
There was a T-Lab, the fact that, that a Heritage deferral is appropriate in some...
Yeah.
Is not inherently inappropriate, is more.
Okay, uh, sorry.
I'm not able to hear the different things.
If you can just, uh, Mr. Carlson, if you can just simply summarize?
It was a decision, I would not be able to cite it at the moment, but there was a decision...
Yeah.
T-Lab to the effect that deferring a property, uh, for Heritage is not inherently inappropriate.
Fair enough. I mean, I suppose I'd be, my simple argument with the Heritage thing is, is to make it clear they have no legal jurisdiction right now. Like anyone else, they're welcome to take their concerns to T-Lab. We'd welcome the opportunity for a fuller discussion. And so I'm just sitting here with, with six pretty minor zoning variances and a bunch of hubbub caused by Heritage with no basis in applicable law.
Uh, but in terms of the OP policies that they...
No, I understand that there's a slight, that there's an OP implication, but I'm just saying, that's our position, right?
Okay, panel members, uh, then we're in committee discussion?
Well, through you, Madam Chair, I, I hear what Mr. Skeen says in terms of the legality. However, um, we do look at character of the neighborhood as a panel. I don't feel what's, and I, I get that this is not a Heritage property itself. However, if I look at what they're looking for, it's, it's really more of a design and cladding-type changes, and it's not so much related to the variances. Personally, I, I, I would like to see a deferral. I, I think it does make sense in this case for the applicant to, you know, perhaps go back and, and try to make some changes that can mitigate this.
May I?
I don't...
So we're in committee?
I, I don't feel that from a character perspective, if it's within the, the look of, of a streetscape.
I agree with that assessment. This is, I don't think this is as out of nowhere as the applicant would have, would, uh, would claim. Planning has commented, uh, they agree that there's, that there are issues worth examining here. And I do have questions about the character of the proposal. I think the deferral is valuable.
I, yeah, I echo the, the same sentiments of my colleagues. We, as part of our decision-making criteria under the Planning Act, we... We, as part of our decision-making criteria under the Planning Act, we do have to look at the general intent and purpose of the OP, and Heritage does specify specific OP policies that would be... But that the proposed application would not be in keeping of. So, yes, that's my comment.
I... Mr. Skeen, I think it's probably in your best interest to agree to a deferral, to give Heritage a chance to come back to us and say we have no interest.
Well...
Yeah, because I'm not set... I'm not comfortable.
Heritage, it's not a listed property.
Yeah.
But it does speak to the character of the neighborhood, and I think that's what Heritage is looking at.
Okay. Okay. So if there's no more comments, I'll need a motion.
So through you, Madam Chair, I would move approval of the... Or move approval of a deferral. I know Heritage asked for six months. I'd like to think you can do this in three months, but... So I would say three months.
I would second that.
Okay. Including recirculation fees?
Oh, yeah, with the recirculation fees.
A motion to defer the application for three months, including recirculation fees, has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
Yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Russell. All in favor? So the application has been deferred to allow the agent applicant to consult with Heritage.
For three months.
Three months of deferral, right?
Three months.
Three months, yeah.
Thanks for your time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Item number... Just one second.
Thirty-one.
Item number thirty-one, 122 MacPherson Avenue. So if you can have the agent applicant please come up, as well as the parties in interest of the application, to be seated on my left-hand side. Okay. So before we start... Yeah, just right here. Before we start, I would like to know how many of you are planning to speak today? So, at least three people? Five people? Okay. Just to make sure not to repeat the same comments or concerns. And... Okay. So before we proceed, I'm just going to mention what the committee has in front of us. We have a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a cover letter from the agent. We have a cover letter with revised plans from the agent. We have four form letters in support from various owners and occupants of forty-three, one-fourteen, one-thirty-four, one-fifty-nine, MacPherson Avenue. And then we have number of letters in opposition from one-ten, one-fifteen, one... Sorry. One-ten MacPherson, one-fifteen, one-seventeen Marlboro Avenue, and then number of addresses on MacPherson, as well as MacPherson mainly. Okay? If you can please introduce yourself.
So hello, my name is James McGilvray. I'm representing Lamas Architecture Limited, and also my clients Jason and Marcella, the homeowners. I have some slides that I wanted to give you.
Sure. If you can perhaps do on the projectors, just for the public interest, unless you have extra copies... Sorry. Yeah, it would be preferable to use a projector, unless there's like detailed information that we won't be able to see from the projector. Okay. So I think we have the letters of support on file. Just the one I mentioned, the four? Is that those are the letters of support? Okay. So we have those on file. Ah, yes, we do have the plans.
Can I just ask you one question? The letter you sent with the plans with the bubbles on it, is that what you want us to use? Because that's your most updated. It's not the ones that we have. I just... Yeah. So that's... Even though it doesn't change the variances, but it shows the things you agree to with the neighbors in terms of...
Exactly. So after the meeting with the neighbors on the sixteenth, several concerns were raised. Okay. So these were like the rear dormer, dormers in front. The initial changes for dormers in front. Also the bay windows, we're going to square it off and make it more watered. And then also the neighbors were actually very helpful in terms of the water issue. It's like if there is a place or if there's usually a lot of pooling of water, then it's a big problem with lowering the foundation in the neighborhood. Those are the concerns. Sorry, from that meeting. And we tried to address a number of five changes. Those were to eliminate the occupiable pairs from the third floor, third, back third floor. Also, not doing the...
Ah, yes. So you're at six minutes. You know what? So we'll hold you down, we'll have the neighbors speak, and then during the rebuttal, we'll ask you more questions, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. So we'll have one of the neighbors, please come up, introduce themselves and their address. Ah, sure. Okay. Sorry. So you have five minutes, so if you can just quickly wrap up. Okay. Thank you very much. Panel members, do you have any questions? Okay. No questions. So we'll have the next neighbor come up and raise their concerns. Just please make sure not to repeat anything that was already said. Okay. If you can please introduce yourself and your address.
From our dining room, first floor, our view to the third floor and lock in our first
Um, it's okay, we have it in front of us. Okay, so perhaps if you can put the chart back up for the agent to see, which five properties you're referring to? So you're at five minutes. This is in two thousand and eight? Okay, thank you, just one second, panel members, do you have any questions? Thank you. You can also have someone hold it up if they're willing to in front of us.
Um, yeah, to that point, with respect to this modification, what was the response back? So, so they, they had seen this before, you had discussed this before today?
Yes.
I see. So, um, I, so the client isn't willing to make modifications, is that kind of? Right, that's a major modification, though, we can't make that on the fly, it would've made more sense to ask for a deferral before we got started here.
I mean, I have another question, so if you can, sorry, if you can bring back the models. So your client's house has a two-story rare addition. Is that correct?
Yes.
Um, and it seems as though the proposed addition aligns with your two-story rare addition. Except for the fact that it is the full width of the, of the prop, of the house in the rare, rather than cut out.
Yes, to your point, it extends somewhat beyond.
Okay.
A little bit more, right?
Yes.
About how much more, a meter or so?
Uh, seems to be a little less. Yeah, so they can see that there. So it's just an aggregate form of the addition, right? Typically, what we're seeing with these is that they're all set back on this side. So, my client, there's about this client, and they're trying to work together to say, well, what will work for everybody? Okay? And that is how the proposal of the second floor being brought back, you know, in that sort of spirit banked in a plane, would solve everyone's problem.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, is there anyone else, panel members, do you have any more questions?
No.
Uh, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, so we'll have the agent come up and respond to the raised concerns. Um, is there anything that was highlighted in the objection letters that differs from what was highlighted today at the hearing, in terms of the concerns? Okay, so let's just discuss. Okay, so yeah, so let's just discuss the concerns that were raised here today. Maybe share a copy or two, we'll share, we'll share a copy and then perhaps if you can share it with the neighbor. Uh, panel members, do you have any questions? Okay, uh, no questions, okay, thank you very much, so we're in committee discussion.
I'm sympathetic to what I've heard from the neighbors, and I really do appreciate the models. But, on balance, I'm finding that this addition is in character for the neighborhood. And we don't have any issues about the building envelope. Uh, we really are looking at floor space alone. Uh, the addition goes back roughly as far as others, even immediately adjacent, it is somewhat wider, but... Um, I think it is in character, I think it is minor. I find myself supporting the application.
I, I would agree with Mr. Carlson, I, I do think that the neighbors have put forward a, a very good case. However, looking at what's in the neighborhood and seeing the applicant's case, I, I would agree with Mr. Carlson that it's not out of character. I think it's unfortunate that there wasn't more dialogue to perhaps mitigate it somewhat, it's, it's too late at this stage. But in terms of what's before us, I would agree that, that this is indeed a minor application.
Um, I'm slightly more conflicted, because this is a semi, and we heard from the opposing party wall neighbor. Uh, but at the same time, this, the proposal does not impact the front wall of, of the house. Um, it seems to be quite similar to what you see on the eastern part of the properties, or east, east of the property, in terms of the two-story rare additions. Um, I mean, I do really appreciate the neighbor's Excel spreadsheet and the fact that it does provide more context in terms of the lot sizes, and how that changes the, the kind of perspective on what the FSI or the GFA was approved at. Um, but at the same time, I do find myself in favor of the application in terms of considering it, it being minor. Especially considering also that the, the agent, the owner, have conceded to some extent in terms of changing the, removing the third, second story deck, or third story deck. Though I, at the same time, I do hear the party wall neighbor's concerns in terms of having a wall be erected. That's two-story rather than the existing one-story. Okay, Mr. Russell?
Quite a presentation. Um, the, uh, the, I'm trying to look to see if there's any, anything that's really outside of what is normal here, and I didn't see it. And so, I'm, I'm sympathetic to neighborhoods, as you probably know. Um, but in this case, it seemed like the application was, was well, well in line.
Okay, um, any other comments? If not, I'll need a motion.
Through you, Madam Chair. Based on what we've already outlined in our discussion, I, I would move approval of the application. Uh, I would like to make sure that these plans are the ones we're approving dated October twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen, which were part of the submission from La Mas Architect, Architecture dated October twenty-ninth. It's got the, um, the four items that were agreed to with neighbors, sort of highlighted, but does not change the variances. So I would move approval of attaching these plans to the decision. And to be constructed substantially into, in accordance with the plans dated October twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen.
Okay, so a motion to approve, including the attached condition and the attached plans, has been moved by Ms. Omen, do we have a second, there? Second, Mr. Carlson, all in favor? So the application has been approved, okay, thank you very much. Um, so once again, I strongly advise to fill out the decision request cards to hear of any appeals proceedings. Um, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna vet the next time slot, but then we're gonna take a five-minute washroom break. Do we have the agent-owner for thirty-two fifty-one Rosedale Heights Drive here? Okay? Yeah. Um, do we have any parties in interest of this application, fifty-one Rosedale Heights Drive? Nope. Item number thirty-three sixty-nine Old Forest Hill Drive, do we have the agent applicant? Okay, do we have any parties in interest for sixty-nine Old Forest Hill Drive? Item number thirty-four twenty-three Rush Home Park Crescent, agent applicant, do we have any parties in interest for twenty-three Rush Home? Nope. Item number thirty-five two Harvard Avenue, agent applicant, okay, do we, do we have any parties in interest for two Harvard Avenue? Item number thirty-six eight twenty-five Shaw Street, agent applicant, okay, do we have any parties in interest? Okay, so, uh, so we strongly advise you to step outside to discuss any outstanding issues. Um, item number thirty-seven seventy-nine Gwynne Avenue, agent applicant. Okay, do we have any interested parties? And, nope. Okay, I'm just gonna let other people speak for themselves, but, no, seventy-nine Gwynne Avenue? Okay, number, okay, so that, that is it for this time slot, so the only item that is being held is item number thirty-six eight twenty-five Shaw Street. So we're just gonna take a quick five-minute washroom break. Okay, so we're just gonna, we're gonna start. Uh, for item number thirty-two fifty-one Rosedale Heights Drive, if we can have the agent applicant please come up. And I'll just specify what the committee has in front of us. We have plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations, we have three photographs of the subject property, we have a C of A decision affecting the subject property, we have a staff report from Transportation Services, and then we have three form letters in support from forty and forty-seven Rosedale. And then we have three form letters in support from 40 and 47 Rosedale Heights Drive, and then 55. Okay, if you can, please introduce yourself. Just one second. Okay, panel members, would you like a presentation or go directly into questions? We'll just go directly into questions.
Actually, don't have any.
So... Okay, so the existing is already beyond the allowable, is that correct? And you're adding 42 meters squared? Okay. And then you do have a driveway or a front, your parking pad? Okay. Okay, panel members, any other questions? Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, we have two form letters also in support from 55 and 40. Or I said three letters, right? Okay, no more questions. We're in committee discussion or motion?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think that what's being proposed is reasonable, fits within the context of the neighborhood, and I would move approval of the application.
Okay, so, okay. A motion to approve has been moved by Mr., by Ms. Omen. Do we have a, do we have a seconder?
I will second that.
Second, Mr. Carlson, all in favor? Okay, abstain, Mr. Russell. So the application has been approved. Abstain.
I was not here during this question.
Okay, so the application has been approved. Thank you very much. Item number 3369 Old Forest Hill Road. The committee has in front of us... We have plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have statistics on the new Toronto bylaw. We have a staff report from Urban Forestry. And then we have three form letters in support by various owners occupants of 71, so directly adjacent neighbor, and Old Forest Hill Road, as well as 259 and 263 Dunvegan Road. Okay, if you can, please introduce yourself.
Right now? There we go. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Last name is Bronski, first initial D for David here, acting as the agent on behalf of the applicant. And I'm joined by Mr. Wengel, the architect. You have in front of you a proposal for a new detached dwelling with an integral garage. It does have below-ground parking, which we will show you is the reason for the length and depth variances. And then a rear yard pool and rear yard ground floor terrace, as well as decks. If I walk through just very quickly for you the package Mr. Wengel provided, there have been a number of discussions with city planning about the design of the house. And if you note on both Page 1 and Page 2, where we've highlighted in the underlined blue section, there were reductions in the proposed heights through this process, added the instructions of planning to secure their support. There had been an earlier proposal with a higher height, which planning had not supported. And then based on these reductions in height, both in terms of the absolute height and the main wall heights, planning staff then have not provided a report and are in support. Page 3 just gives you then a site plan as to how the proposed dwelling fits with the neighbors on either side. As you noted, Madam Chair, those neighbors have both provided letters of support. You can note that the rear wall has been designed to line up with the one neighbor, and on the other side, the neighbor's house staggers away. But in fact, that side wall is actually a little bit further away from the property line than the bylaw would require. So it's actually a slightly more generous side yard setback there on that side. And so the design has been to ensure that the building, as it sits on the site, relates well to both of the adjacent properties. Page 4 then zooms in a little bit, lets you see a little bit more detail and actually be able to read some of the numbers that are on the plan. I would note, in terms of length and depth, the two-story portion of the structure, which is in the single hatching as opposed to the cross hatching, has a length of 22.69 meters. And I just wanted to contrast that with you in terms of the overall length and depth, which are both over 35, 35.96 and 37.01. That's because they're both measured to the back of the excavated terrace. So when I mentioned to you below-grade parking earlier, there's actually parking that goes out under that terrace. So we end up having to measure the length and depth, not to the back of the first-story structure, which is the cross hatching, but actually to the back of that excavated at-grade terrace. Our client is prepared to accept a condition that would have construction occur substantially in accordance with the plans, so that the first floor and second floor portions could not extend any further back, so that those length and depth variances would be attached only to those components of the proposed house to which they relate. Quantitatively, what we've been able to do, these are Pages 5 and 6, is look at the proposed densities, as well as the length of dwelling approvals. We're at 78.34 on Page 5. You can see in the surrounding Forest Hill neighborhood, a number of GFAs, similar, slightly below, and slightly above, some dramatically above. But in our submission, it does fit within the range of the numbers in terms of density approvals that have been obtained in the area. Page 6, again, a similar exercise. We're in at 37.01 overall in terms of what we're seeking. And you can see that there's a number of length and depth ranging from the low to mid twenties, and then we've circled some that are similar to our site, and indeed are above 40 in terms of length of dwelling approvals that are in the vicinity of the site. Overall, you can see we've noted there 29.59 to the back of the ground floor, as I indicated earlier, 22.69 to the back of the second floor. The remaining part of the package is just some drawings to show how the proposal would fit in. We've got a street view showing the proposal as it fits with the immediately adjacent neighbor. Then there's a front view, which is a close-up. And perhaps of most interest, what we've been able to do is a rear view showing the different components of the structure. And so you can see the rear deck to where the length and depth is measured. You can also then see that first-story portion, which will have that outdoor room. You can also see there's a privacy screen that's been put on the side of the deck adjacent to the neighbors. And then you can see the second-story portion that ends up having a platform from them out the back. And again, those have been reviewed with the neighbors. That's the wall, that's 22.69 meters. So that's the overall proposal and some of our justification for what's being sought. And we're happy to answer any questions that the committee may have.
Panel members, do you have any questions?
I guess the difficulty is to ask the questions that have been covered by Mr. Because they have been covered.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, no more comments or questions, so in committee discussion?
Sorry, there are some variances here that, in their raw numbers, gave me pause. But with explanation, this really does appear to be in character.
And I do think the design of the building really helps in terms of mitigating massing issues or any of the actual variances in terms of the second and third floor. Okay, any other comments or... Okay, no more comments. I'll need a motion then.
Through you, Madam Chair. I believe this proposal is within character of the community, otherwise meets four tests, and therefore move approval of the application with forestry conditions 1 and 3.
And how about a condition to be constructed in accordance with plans?
Does it depend, is it submitted today?
These are not different, these are the same funds.
Yeah, these aren't even, these aren't complete, and there's no changes here.
Okay, so no, so just forestry, C1 and C3? Okay, a motion to approve, including the two forestry conditions, has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Do we have a seconder? Okay, second, Mr. Russell, all in favor? So the application has been approved. Thank you very much. Item number 3423 Rush Home Park Crescent? Okay, so for 23 Rush Home Park Crescent, the committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have the cover letter from the call, Brun Mayor. We have a C of A decision, as well as the OMB decision affecting the subject property. We have a staff report from community planning. And then we have correspondence in support from the counselor, as well as correspondence in support from 21, 31, and 25 Rush Home Park Crescent. If you can, please introduce yourself.
I'm Nicole Brunmayr. I'm the owner and architect for the project.
Okay, panel members, would you like to go directly into questions or presentation? We'll go directly into questions. So since you gave us these photos, perhaps you can just quickly...
Yeah, so that's just to give a bit of context. The first photo was the state of the property when I bought it. So the history is the previous owner had done a whole bunch of illegal building work over the years, and had attempted to get approval through committee of adjustment, which was refused, and then OMB. And this is just showing the process of I've already begun to take down some of the illegal elements, which were the back decks. And now I'm just trying to get legalization for the enclosed ground floor and the third floor addition. And you can see by the later photos that the neighboring houses are set further back than my property, so there'll be no issues of overshadowing with sunlight or anything like that. And I'm a sort of lower-height property on the street, so there aren't issues of, again, overshadowing onto other neighboring properties. And then this is just showing, you can see on the screen, there are some existing garages along the laneway at the back. One of the zoning issues was the setback from the lane. So just showing a kind of character of the neighborhood, that the garages are right directly onto the lane property line.
I have a question in terms of permeable pavers. Because you're asking for a self-landscaping deficit in the rear, how do you feel about installing permeable pavers for the parking pads?
Oh, at the...
At the rear?
At the raised level, yeah, I think that would work. I think I still need to get through me with a geotechnical engineer to figure out exactly how this would be built. But I think working in some kind of system that can mediate runoff from the laneway, because that property is a, that section is lower, the laneway and St. Anne's behind are higher, so I think definitely bringing considerations of drainage.
How prevalent are decks on the third floor in the area?
Very prevalent. The two neighboring houses have decks on the third floor, and quite a few, you can see there on the screen. So yeah, both sides have third-floor decks, and quite a few on the rest of the street. And again, the proposal is within the footprint of the existing building, so I won't be extending beyond the original footprint of the building.
And you're aware of the planning report that's asking for screening on the second and third floor decks?
Yeah, so the 1.5 on the east and west sides of the decks.
Any other questions? Okay, no more questions, we're in committee for discussion? Discussion or motion?
Through you, Madam Chair. In that area, there are a lot of additions, varying in size, but certainly in keeping with what's being proposed here, as well as the decks. So I would be prepared to move approval, including the condition in the planning report dated October 29th.
Okay, so a motion to approve, including the planning condition, has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
Second.
Second, Mr. Russell, all in favor? So the application has been approved. Thank you very much. Item number 352 Harvard Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a C of A decision affecting the subject property. And then we have a staff report from community planning, as well as correspondence in support from 4 Harvard, and then four form letters in support from various occupants, owners on Calendar, Calender Street. If you can, please introduce yourself.
Sure. Hi, I'm Angus Keane. I'm the architect and agent for the proposal at 2 Harvard.
Okay, so do we have any people in interest or opposing the application, or...
These are the owners.
Oh, these are the owners, okay.
Yeah, they're simply here in case there were any questions.
Sounds good.
You want to direct to them. Four variances required here, connected to the creation of a new roof deck on an existing sort of 1960s apartment building that was built as infill a long time ago. The variance is triggered of the four. Under the old bylaw and the new bylaw, we trigger height variances, so that's two of them. Under the new bylaw, we trigger FSI or GFA. And in a sort of peculiarity, under the old bylaw, we trigger a setback variance. Now, I worked with May at Planning to essentially strike a deal, which, you know, satisfied planning's concerns about the side yard setback and the height, and that certainly met the concerns of the applicants themselves. So I'd like to think of it as a happy deal. There's, these are long-term owners. The letters of support you have, it's a little dead-end street, a little cul-de-sac there. And so these are literally everybody who would be surrounding the building on which this roof deck would be placed. It seems to be the vast majority are in support, and certainly nobody has expressed any concern. Planning's concern was simply a departmental concern. It wasn't prompted by a neighbor calling or anything like that. I can present a sort of coherent little presentation, if you'd like me to.
I think we just go directly.
Yeah, I'm trying to just sort of use your time best, if you...
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions?
I know that you're triggering of the variances, but you have the second variance under the new bylaw. You've moved one to one requirement is 0.6 times, and you're requesting 1.48 times year of the law.
Yeah, what's going on is the building itself, as an infill from like 1962, is sitting there with, let me just look here, 361.5 square meters, so it's at 1.47, just by the nature of what was built 50 years ago. We increase it by creating the penthouse by 3.25 square meters, essentially a staircase worth of area going to the roof, which takes us from the 1.47 that exists today to 1.48. So it's a bit deceptive. The building is so far over the acceptable modern GFA. That's how that came to be.
Okay, any other questions? No more questions, we're in committee discussion.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm just looking at a previous C of A decision here for number four, which was included 1.56 times. So in terms of the GFA, what's being proposed is certainly in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood, as well as the adjacent property. So I think that if the planning conditions were included from the October 31st report, I think that this meets the four tests and is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, and I'd move approval.
Yeah, I would strongly agree. I think the neighborhood has a post-war high-rise apartment across the street. It's quite a unique street. And also, I think in terms of the rooftop deck, just the fact that it is setback from the... deck, just the fact that it is setback from, from the, from the property, or from the walls, main walls of the, of the property, I think that mitigates my concerns in terms of overlook.
Okay, any other? Okay?
Let's get a motion.
Okay.
I would move approval of the application, including the condition in the planning report dated October 31st.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen, including the planning conditions in the October 31st report, second, Mr. Carlson, all in favor? So the application's been approved, thank you very much. So item thirty-six is being held, so item thirty-seven, seventy-nine, Gwynne Avenue, the committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations, we also have a cover letter from the applicant, including a signed affidavit of Mary Stevenson, we have a historical survey for eighty-one Gwynne Avenue and neighboring homes on Gwynne Avenue, we've covered porches showing presidents, and then we also have a staff report from community planning. If you can please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, I'm Andreas Hebert, I'm the applicant, I'm here with my wife, Katia Jeanne Niemchek.
Okay, since you're only asking for one variance, we'll just go directly into questions. Okay, panel members, do you have any questions?
Are you, you are comfortable with the recommendations in the planning report?
I suppose, we, we never considered a second story, we just wanted to enclose the porch itself, so it, we, I wouldn't take any position on it at all, it doesn't really affect our application. It appears that staff don't have any issue with what we're proposing, but they wanted just to make sure that we weren't building a second story, which is not our intention.
I just have a question, in regards to your cover letter, you mentioned the fact that porches have been pretty a consistent feature of these townhouses?
Yes.
So, and then they have been removed recently on some of the properties, so were porches the original feature of these, of these townhouses, or was that something that was added throughout?
I, I tried to find that out, I made, I made some inquiries with the Parkdale Historical Society, and I looked at some of the city plans, I wasn't able to determine that, I know that our porch was, was built or rebuilt in nineteen-fifty-four, it is, so the, the structure that's there now is not a historic structure, but the enclosure would make it appear like one, it, it would make sense in keeping with the, the norms of the, the time, eighteen-eighty-one was when the Sewell Block was built, that there, that there could have been porches dating either back to that period or the early twentieth century because of the popularity of sun porches then, they kind of waned in the, in the post-war period. Whether the other adjacent properties had covered porches that were built in the early twentieth century, I'm not sure, but I know, I've been there for twenty years, Mrs. Stevenson's been there since the early sixties, and those porches were in existence at that time, and they've been taken down since. I know when I moved in, even my neighbors at eighty-one Gwynne that had the porch appearing on that survey that I provided, it, it was not there then, so I assume that, you know, in the, in the eighties or the seventies, when people were trying to modernize these old Victorians, they probably tore them down at that time.
Okay, okay, thank you very much, panel members, do you have any other questions? No, okay, so we're in committee for discussion, discussion or motion?
I just want to note that, that the applicant has enthusiastic verbal support from all the neighbors.
Yep. I am extremely comfortable with this application, it's very minor in nature and is appropriate to the site, so I would move approval of the application, subject to the conditions outlined in the planning report dated October 30th.
A motion to approve including the planning conditions has been moved by Mr. Carlson, do we have a seconder? Second, Mr. Russell, all in favor? So the application's been approved, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So we move forward with item number thirty-six, eight-twenty-five Shaw Street, if we can have the agent applicant please come up, as well as any parties in interest of this application to be seated on my left-hand side. Okay, so first I'll just mention what the committee has in front of us, we have a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations, we also have a cover letter from the applicant's... Oh, sorry, I'm just, I'm reading the wrong file. Item number thirty-six, eight-twenty-five Shaw Street, plan of survey, site plan, site plan, floor plans, elevations, then we have a cover letter from the agent. If you can please introduce yourself.
I'm Khalid, and this is Nick, we're from, we're the agent, agent of the owner. The owner purchased this property over a year ago, a per, a permit was issued for underpinning first and second floor work, he had a previous consultant in there, there was a lot of issues as he wanted to do things on the third floor, they misguided him, we got involved, we submitted drawing to, there was an existing illegal dwelling in the attic of the third floor. So our request is to build a third floor, which is similar, well, it's, it has a larger GFA, but as properties in the neighborhood, they, that have third floors, and that's what our application is.
Okay, um, okay, so we'll have you sit down for now, we'll have the, the parties in interest please come up, introduce themselves and their address, and also the, outline the concerns that they have with the application.
I'm Ian Hamilton, eight-two-three Shaw Street, this is my wife, Victoria Barclay, we are co-owners of, of that property.
Okay, so the adjacent property then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, first of all, I'll just note that the maximum permitted floor space is 0.6 times the area, and with what they propose, it will be 1.13 times, that's almost double, which doesn't seem to us to be minor at all, but the fact is that they're applying for a permit to put up this third floor. Last week, we noticed it was noticeably darker, and it's because they'd constructed one wall, and I'll show you the picture, I don't know how visible that is, that, that's a view from our, our third floor window, we're looking directly at a blank wall, where before we had a, a view, so that doesn't seem minor to me. When I saw, when I saw that, I, I called the inspector, and I, it's my understanding that a stop-work order was put in place, and then on, on Saturday, when of course the doors closed, suddenly three more walls of this third-floor, third-floor extension went up, we, we have pictures that we can show you of this, that's, that's the, that's the back wall, and that went up on, on the Saturday, and then this is the front wall that also went up on the Saturday, so we're, we're upset about the size of this, we're upset that it's built, the one wall is built so close to our window, I, I even wonder if that's allowed under the building code, it seems to me that's, it's a fire hazard, if there's a fire in their house, it could just like spread through our window, so we, we don't see this as a minor adjustment at all, we see it as a major one, that impacts the quality of life by, by blocking our window, and so we, we don't believe it should be given the go-ahead, and we think they, they should tear down these walls that they've put up, you know, before it becomes even more of a reality than it already is.
Okay, and perhaps, so on my side visit, I noticed there's a three-story apartment building nearby, is that correct?
That's on the, on the other side of Shaw Street.
On the other, yeah, but typically, what is the, our third stories common in, on Shaw Street?
They, they, there are some with, with third stories, some without third story, we, we have like what I call a partial, partial third stories, you could call us a two and a half, the one on the other side of eight-two-five is a two-story, so it's quite a varied street.
Okay, any other questions? And also just to clarify, so the, I believe the existing condition is something the agent will speak to, is already, it's beyond the allowable, is at 1.06 times. So it's a two-and-nine meter squared. Okay, any questions? Thank you very much, so we'll have the agent come up and respond to the raised concerns.
Before you start, because I think it's part of what you're going to address, in your letter, I think you wrote it, you say the existing FSI is 1.06, and that you're only adding fourteen-point-zero-nine square meters, or point-zero-seven meters, or times, how does that factor into the pictures we just saw? It looks like a bit more based on the pictures, so I'm just curious what's happening.
As my colleague said earlier, the attic was being used as a dwelling space, and it was listed in the original plans as livable space condition, all that we are doing is basically taking the pitched roof and scraping out the walls to create an eight-foot-high livable space across the building. So that fourteen-meter-square meter difference is actually the unlivable space of the pitched roof.
Okay. I have a question in terms of the process, so, so what is happening with these walls being put up now, before the approvals have gone through?
So what happened is that we got received, well, the owner received a call, on Saturday, he received a call, the contractor on site, there was a permit to demo the existing wall, the existing attic, the roof. Without us giving approval, he had started the work on the walls, we call, as soon as the inspector called, he called the owner on Saturday, we contacted the contractor to stop, the inspector also did say, because there is existing work, there is existing permits for the basement first and second floor, they can proceed with that work, and just to wait for the hearing based on those walls. So the only, he did allow bracing to happen, that, even that hasn't happened because we just didn't want it, the owner didn't want any issue moving forward.
Okay.
And, you know, the adjacent property already has a, a third floor, there are other properties that have a third floor, and he, he wants to give it a nice, clean, modern look.
Actually, can you, can you speak to that, can you show us other examples of full three-story additions?
Well, we, we don't have that with us and for that, for that area, we just have that specific, our specific property.
Can you potentially like reference addresses on the street that...
Well, across the street...
Full three-story?
Across the street, there's a, I don't know what the address is, I believe it's eight-twenty-eight or eight-thirty, so they have the two-story, and then at the back, they have a third story. There's a property, one, two, three, so about six pro, six houses...
If you can show it on this projector as well.
Okay, one second, let me see if I can get this. Those are properties just to the north of it, I think, I believe about ten townhouses away, and there's further more going up, up north on Shaw Street.
How about full three-story additions?
The three or two?
Uh, it's three stories, but there's still that pitched roof of...
They have, they, their pitch is at the front, the gable, if you look at the side, you can see it's collapsed at the top, and then pitches down.
Okay.
There's some construction, further construction happening on Shaw Street.
Panel members, any other questions? So no more questions, we're in committee discussion.
In terms of what's being added, it's minor, in terms of the amount of square footage. As far as the, the squaring off, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure about the...
How that fits in the character of the neighborhoods, those are my concerns.
I'm not sure about the character, and I, I'm nervous about this being on a waiver, but that would just, if there were further issues, yeah, they'd have to come back. So I think as this is before us, I'm going to be supporting it, is pushing the boundaries of character though.
I agree, I mean, in terms of the actual variance, it's, it's minor.
The variance is, but the correct, the correct which forms the variance is, is not.
Yes, I also have concerns about this being a full three-story, third-story addition, and very little design features have been used to mitigate the impact in terms of shadowing, like in terms of adding a pitched roof, so that's my concern. But I do agree with my colleagues in terms of the actual change, in terms of numerical changes, it is minor when you consider the existing condition.
It's numerical, but beyond that, you have to consider correctors to really, yeah, impacting the, the cracks of the neighborhood.
But at the same time, like as, as I mentioned, the agent confirmed, there is a three-story apartment building across the street.
How many other tri apartment, sorry, how many tri apartment bil, um, three-story apartment buildings are there on the street?
Uh, I believe there's only one, but there, there is, there's partial three-story residential buildings as well. Okay, any other comments, if not, then I'll need a motion.
I would, I would move approval of the application, as I believe it is minor in nature and complies with the purpose of the official plan and bylaw.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Mr. Carlson, do we have a seconder? Second, Ms. Omen, all in favor? So I guess dissenting?
One dissenting, yeah.
Mr. Russell, dissent, and I abstain to avoid a tie. Okay, so the application has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, so it's not four o'clock yet, so I'm not going to vet the time slot, we'll take a three-minute bathroom break, please, five-minute bathroom, five-minute bathroom break.
This is the closest to exactly on schedule.
Yeah.
Be pressing. Pressing.
Okay, so we're going to start. Item number, so first I'm going to vet the agenda to see which items are contested and which are not contested. And then we'll proceed with the uncontested item first, and then we'll proceed with the contested items. For number thirty-eight A, Twenty-two Deer Park Crescent, do we have the agent applicant here? Okay, do we have any interested parties? Twenty-two Deer Park Crescent? Nope. Item number thirty-nine A, Three-Nineteen Westlake Avenue, agent applicant? Okay, do we have any interested parties? Three-nin-, okay, we do. Okay, so that item will be held down. So we strongly advise you to step outside with the agent to discuss any outstanding issues and to potentially resolve them. Item number forty, Twenty-four Hope Dale Avenue, do we have the agent applicant here? Okay, do we have any interested parties? Okay, so the item will be held as well. So once again, we strongly advise you to step outside with the interested parties. Item number forty-one, One-Fifty-six Lenzmore Crescent, do we have the agent applicant here? Okay, do we have any interested parties? One-Fifty-six Lenzmore Crescent? Nope. Item number forty-two, Nineteen Northridge Avenue, do we have agent applicant here? Okay, do we have any interested parties? Nope. Okay, so Nineteen Northridge Avenue, no interested parties. Okay, so the items that are being held include, in this time slot, include Thirty-nine A, Nineteen Westlake Avenue, forty, item forty, Twenty-five, Twenty-four Hope Dale Avenue, and that is it. Okay, so we'll proceed with item number thirty-eight A, Twenty-two Deer Park Crescent. So before we proceed, I'll just mention what the committee has in front of us. We have a draft plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have statistics on the new Toronto bylaw dated June eighteenth, twenty eighteen. We have a staff report from development engineering. And then we have correspondence in support from Twelve Deer Park Crescent, as well as one form letter in support from Twelve Deer Park Crescent. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon. Last name's Bronski, first initial T for David. And like before, I'm joined by, here with Mr. Wengel. We're here for the three items. And first, I'll probably just start with the consent, but my presentation might be able to deal with all three of them in, in, in five minutes or less. On the first page of the package, I'll just highlight two of the variances that I'll come back to as we go through just a discussion of what's being proposed. First, you can see that there are GFAs above the point-six permission. And you'll also see through the process, some reduced setbacks as we go through. And one of the things in particular that we will talk about as well as we go through is just the size of the lots in terms of the lot frontages that are in front of you. And we've done some work on that just to show how the lot frontages work. The third page, I'm just going to start with the site plan to show you the two new dwellings that would sit on the two new lots if the consent was approved and the variances are approved. What Mr. Wengel's office has done is show in red, and it's a bit of, this is where I'm shape-challenged. I think it's a rhombus, but it's, or no, maybe it's a parallelogram. Because you can see that there's the, the two red lines next, parallel to the lot lines. And then at an angle, you can see, because of the angle of the street, what the envelope would end up being permitted on the site. And so it's that weird parallelogram that would have the rear wall not actually perpendicular to the rear lot. And so it's a bit of an odd shape. The houses then what have been designed as best as possible to fit within that shape, but there are some triangular protrusions out the back over that rear lot line or permission at the red of that back. But there's also then some white triangle in the front where there is no structure. And so it's just been a bit of a push and pull to have those rectangles fall within what would otherwise be a parallelogram. As we've noted also in the circles in blue, there's a slightly more generous side yard permission as well on the outside for both the lots next to the adjacent dwellings at twenty and twenty-four. What we've done on the next page is done our best to try and look at some densities that are in the area. You can see what we're proposing at point nine-seven and one point oh-seven. We've been able to get some data from C of A approvals, which are in green. And also done our best to see if we can in black find some of the existing approvals. You can see in this area, which is the northwest quadrant of the Young and St. Clair intersection, that within this immediate sphere or block, we were actually surprised. The densities frankly are by and large at or above one. And while we're at point nine-seven, one point oh-seven, you can see that scattered throughout the neighborhood, there are a lot of approvals or existing that are far in excess of those numbers. We've included then some elevations of the structures themselves. And as well, there's a page that shows different lot frontages. And this is a more zoomed-in site plan. You'll see blue, the site. What we've tried to do is more of a typical lot study. So in green are lot frontages that are less than eleven point oh-eight, which is what we're proposing. The pink would be between eleven point oh-eight and thirteen point four. And you can see there are some that are larger, but we'd submit to you that the vast majority in fact are less than what we're proposing, including within the immediate vicinity of the site. So we think in terms of the OP test that looks at the size and dimensions of the lot, that they are in keeping with the neighborhood and would respect and reinforce that existing lot fabric. We've then included some photos of some of the nearby homes to show in terms of just what's being proposed, how we think it fits in with the style and built form. But overall, we think both quantitatively and qualitatively, what's being proposed would fit in. And so therefore, the consents, we think, meet the different criteria under fifty-one, twenty-four. In particular, the size and dimensions of the lots, in particular conformity with the official plan. And we certainly don't think that a plan of subdivision would be required to create these lots. I'm also happy to ask, answer any questions about the forty-five-one test at this time too.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions? I believe there are no more questions. Nope. Okay, if there are no more questions, discussion or a motion?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think that the setbacks have been, they're very sensitive to the neighbors on either side by pushing the new homes closer together. It's a bit of a mixed bag in the neighborhood, old homes, large lots, smaller lots. And I think that Mr. Bronski has provided sufficient evidence that what's being proposed does fit within the context of the neighborhood and the character. So I'd be prepared to move approval of the application if there are no other comments. No? Okay. So I would move approval of the application, including the standard consent conditions as well as the conditions in the engineering report dated July twenty-fourth.
Okay, so a motion to approve the consent in the various application has been moved by Ms. Omen, including the standard consent conditions and the engineering conditions. Do we have a seconder?
Second.
Okay, second, Mr. Russell, all in favor? So both the consent and the various applications have been approved. Thank you very much.
Twenty-nine, twenty-eight, A, B, and C.
Yeah, thirty-eight, A, B, and C. Okay, so thirty-nine is being held, forty is being held, forty-one. One-Fifty-six Lenzmore Crescent, if we can have the agent applicant please come up. The committee has in front of us copy of the minutes from the June sixth public hearing. We have a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have email correspondence from community planning. And then we have a staff report from community planning. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Stefan Leblanc. I'm the applicant for this, this project. The owners of the house want to do in addition to the rear of the house to make a little bit more room for their family. The, they are, we're keeping the rear addition to within the building depth allowed and also the rear yard setback allowed. But because of the existing garage and the amount of footprint that we're asking for, we do need a minor variance on the lot coverage. We are a little bit over on the also GF, the density allowed. There's, and then following that, there's a number of smaller minor variances that kind of derive from kind of bringing the building line straight to the back. So the roof overhang, some of the setbacks from the north property line are results of kind of keeping the same building line and just extending it backwards. There, we had an earlier discussions with the planning department to resolve the issue with parking. And currently, there is no real, there's no rear yard parking anymore because at some point in the past, before the owner owned the house, that access to where the, what used to be a garage was closed off. So they do park on the side lane right now between the two houses. If you count with the amount of property within their property line, there's not really enough room for a full parking space if you use the guidelines. But the, there's an extra, almost a meter between the property line that belongs to the neighbor, but it's part of their paved driveway. And that kind of gives them room for opening doors and so on. So in, in discussions with the planning department, that's what we agreed, that we could have a minimum size, a smaller, reduced-size parking area to allow for them to park, not on the front lawn, not on the boulevard, but be able to park in between the two houses.
Okay. Panel members, do you have any questions?
Lot, lot coverage, you're looking for, in the, in the old bylaw, forty-seven point six-three percent? Oh, in the new bylaw too, yes, forty-seven point six-three percent. What's, what, how does that fit in with what's in the neighborhood?
The, there are a number of, there are a number of recent renovations, and I don't have the specific addresses, but on, on similar blocks that have fairly sizable lot coverages. There's also, I think it's one forty-two and one forty-four with a very large garage in the back. And again, that has a lot coverage that would be similar to what we have. I don't have the specific numbers, but just looking at sort of aerial photographs, you can see some pretty large garages.
Okay, just to verify, we're on number forty-one, One-Fifty-six Lenzmore Crescent. And also, and just to clarify, so the actual building is at thirty-seven point nine-nine. Is that correct? Not including the accessory structures.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, the accessory structure.
That is one of the planning conditions in the planning reports?
Yeah.
Assuming that there's, their condition is based on the existing.
That's right. The condition, so that if the garage was ever, or that storage space is not a garage, but if that was torn down, that that lot, that lot coverage wouldn't be allowed in a, in a further addition.
Okay.
Forty-one.
Okay, panel members, do you have any other questions? Nope. Okay. No more questions? Okay, so we're in committee discussion or a motion? Okay, Mr. Carlson, sorry?
I think this is appropriate to its context. The lot coverage is the major issue here. And I think it's addressed by planning's condition.
I, I would agree. Okay. So, any more motion?
There's no further discussion. All right, Madam Chair, approval of this application as I believe it to be minor in nature and within the purpose of the zoning bylaw and official plan.
Are you including the planning?
Yes, that includes the planning condition from the report dated November first.
I'll second that.
Excuse me, sorry. So a motion to approve has been moved by Mr. Carlson, including the planning conditions. Second Ms. Omen, all in favor? So the application has been approved. Thank you very much. Here we move forward, item number forty-two, Nineteen Northridge Avenue. If you have the agent applicant please come up. The committee has in front of us a copy of the minutes from the August twenty-ninth public hearing. We have a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have four photographs of the subject property and the neighborhood property, neighboring property at Twenty-nine Northridge Avenue. We have email correspondence from community planning. And then we have five form letters in support by various owners and occupants on Northridge Avenue, including the directly adjacent neighbor at twenty-one. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself.
Yes, Mike Tompe, the owner of Nineteen Northridge. Been there for the last twelve-plus years and are looking, looking at redevelopment, a renovation to the existing home today. So I think what we are down to is one issue through the past few months and various discussions with planning. I think we've come up with one scenario that we need to address today. So I bring him forward just to present the issue. As I understand it, is I think more of a point of clarity along the lines of the last applicant. And what it comes down to truthfully is that every home on this street here is subjected to a right-of-way to the south side of the building so that the neighbor to the north can access their eaves troughs and do maintenance on their homes. I think that the way that the plan was interpreted, and we've had numerous discussions to try to clear this up, is that there was, there was the thought that the right-of-way provided access for the neighbor to the, to the north and so forth on the street to gain access to their property on that side, which is not the case. So be happy to show in a, a survey as well, just for clarity, because there are existing structures on that right-of-way today.
I think we, we do have the survey and we do see the shed on the property line.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah.
So today, I mean, there isn't, any of the homes that have been developed along the street, as well as you see to the right there of Nineteen Northridge, again, they do not have garages and they don't have the ability to facilitate parking in the rear. So I just think it's an interpretation issue on that. So I just think it's an interpretation issue on that side.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions?
He's recommending parking, he's recommending that we refuse parking. Some parking here, what's your position on those?
Actually, the staff report is recommending refusal of variance number one, and four under five-six-nine, 2013, and variance number two under six-seven-five-two. We actually got, we have a copy of an email dated September, actually October 31st, that still supports that position.
With respect to parking?
Yeah.
Right, so this is the point of clarity. So I've had numerous discussions with the planner, Jason Tang here, as well as Cassia with respect to the parking, and she, she had positioned it that it would be best to come in front of you, to walk you through the current state and why I think it was interpreted incorrectly. If you read the September 12th report on page two, it does say, "With respect to the parking variances, there are right-of-ways easements, both the north and south portions of the lot, that appear to provide access to the parking spaces behind the main front wall of the dwelling." And so that's why I wanted to make sure that we were clear that there is no access for the neighbor on the south side of the dwelling. And nor do I have access on the south side of my dwelling to access my yard. It is strictly a maintenance right-of-way. There is no, there is no reason for them to cross your property, otherwise if they are repairing their roof, or they were needing access to clean out their gutters, that's the intent of the, the right-of-way.
And the front yard setback, is that an existing condition? The front yard setback?
Yeah, I think, I think everything was clear on that, just based on what had been done on the street from adjacent owners. I'm not sure where that showed off, but.
Madam Deputy Secretary of Treasury, I have a question about the email here from Cassia, which is the October 31st. She's actually referencing a planning report dated September 12th. I don't see that in my materials. I only have one from August 22nd. Would that be an error in the date, or is there a, a report we don't have? Although I think it boils down to the same thing, that, that the applicant hasn't addressed their concerns.
I could give you a copy if you wish.
Is that the September 12th one? See if it's, see if it's the same. No, it is different. It's only speaking to variance, to two of the variances now.
So speaking to variance number one, 2013, and variance number one, sixty-seven-five-two, related to parking. Just parking.
The fact that the other changes have addressed the setbacks?
Right, because we still had the, only the old one. But then, her email basics, basically says that the report still stands.
I think hers is September 12th.
Right, yeah.
Right. So she still stands with respect to the parking? Which is why, even up until yesterday, we were talking about it, to suggest that I think it's best to come to you to talk through what the issue is, so that everybody understands. There's some difference in the gentleman who presented, you talk about access, and you can see that you have a picture, but everybody knew I was, as is their own, who could use.
This one, whatever happened with these documents, this was one of them.
And do you have support from that adjacent property that shares the right-of-way? Is that number nineteen?
I do, that, that's number, that'd be number twenty-one.
Number twenty-one.
And so that, yeah, that's called out in there as well.
Okay. Okay, panel members, any other questions? Can we keep this?
Yeah.
Would you like to?
Sure.
Yeah, just give me one second. Here, I'll give you this half, I just want to read the second page. I'm just going to allow panel members just to read the staff report.
So basically, you can, somebody can park at the back, like going through, is that?
They can't.
You would not be able to, today you cannot, and nor would you be with the proposed renovation.
So, as the agent has highlighted, if you look at the survey, there is an existing shed on the property line that altogether blocks access to both backyards, as well as the owner of twenty-one has built a one-story rear addition that also further blocks access to the rear.
Okay, so we have a problem with, with the park, with, which has to be cleared up here, and we can't move forward with clarity. He's saying that we, it's a right-of-way.
No, he's just explaining the fact that, like, he spoke to planning, and they said to come here to explain why it's okay to, to park in the right-of-way. And what the owner has said is that the right-of-way is not being used as a access, as a way to access the backyard, because there's already existing structures that block the access.
If you look at the pictures for the, for the house at number twenty-three, you'll see that they actually bumped out their house into the driveway, which would prohibit any access to the rear.
I mean, I feel comfortable moving forward, considering that also in the, the planning report, it specifies it's typically, let me just read the wording, this is generally not permitted.
That's the parking, oh, nevermind.
That's on street. Our base, but then if.
Generally not permitted on the right-of-way easement.
Or not.
Yeah.
But clearly, people are parking on the right-of-way.
Yeah, you can't, you can't, yeah, you can't, can't go behind there. You know what? I think based on these pictures we have here, we can't accept the, the August 22 report, nor the report, based on the pictures, just the pictures we have on file.
Okay. So panel members, I'll need a discussion or a motion?
I'm going to move acceptance of this application and reject the, the, the report provided by, by staff, in that it's contrary to what the, the application, the pictures, the picture documentation shows. I'm going to move acceptance of the application.
Yeah, just the only thing to add, as well as the survey, shows that the right-of-way is not being used to access the rear, any rear parking spot.
There's no way you can go, you can act.
And also, there's support from the adjacent neighbor that utilizes the right-of-way. Okay, so Mr. Russell is moving a motion to approve the variance application. Do we have a seconder? Okay, Mr. Carlson, all in favor? Okay, so the application has been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we move forward with the contested items in this time slot. So we move forward with item number thirty-nine A, 319 Westlake Avenue. If we can please have the agent applicant come up, as well as any parties opposing the application or interest of the application. And the parties could be seated to my right-hand side. Also, before we proceed, I would like to advise everyone to fill out decision request cards, which are available right here at the end of the horseshoe, so that we have correct information for our records in terms of who showed up, as well as if there's any appeals proceedings, you will be notified by email based on that decision request card. Okay, so before we start, the committee has in front of us draft plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have email correspondence from community planning, and the Toronto and Regional Conservation Authority, as well as we have staff report from development engineering, and then we have six form letters in support by various owners, such occupants, on 306, 310, 315, 316, 323, and 327 Westlake Avenue. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself.
Yes, hi, good afternoon. My name is Leo Masternaria. I'm the agent for the owners. We are here today to sever the lot into two and construct two new detached dwellings. We have no concerns from TRCA, like you said. Development engineering has no concerns. Planning had concerns regarding our parking pads. They just wanted us to make them permissible, which we did agree to. If I'd like to speak to our consent, first of all, we comply with the frontage and we comply with the lot area. Secondly, in regards to our minor variances, application A038, eighteen TSY, has only one variance with a side yard setback of two feet, which is between our own buildings. And in addition, it does comply with the old bylaw. In the other application, six-three-nine, we have two variances. One has to do with the same side yard setback, which again, is in between our own buildings. And then secondly, is the soft landscaping in the rear yard, which is the right-of-way between us and the neighbors. And the one marked in the red is the one we had to deduct from our landscaping, because it's an existing driveway from the neighbors. So we had no way around avoiding that variance, which is minor in nature. And in addition, I do feel that these properties, these, this application is minor in nature. It is desirable and appropriate for development and use of the land, and the general intent of the official plan and the city zoning bylaw are maintained. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, panel members, do you, I'll wait with the questions until the rebuttal phase. So if we can have the, how many of you are applying to speak from the neighbors?
Three.
Okay, three. So just to make sure not to cover the same points. Okay, so if we can have one of you please come up, introduce themselves and their address.
Okay, my name's Christian Connors.
Sorry, just because I didn't do the opening remarks, you have maximum of five minutes to speak, okay?
Understood.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so I'm here representing 317 Westlake Avenue, the immediate neighbor sharing the boundary line. Just a few concerns. One, from the urban tree forestry conditions. If the proper permits were obtained to, there's been a removal of three trees, all matured trees. We've made a request to the ownership to see this. They did not present it, so we would like for that to be presented, because the trees have already been removed. Also, it states that all trees within six meters of the property line are to be shown. We have several mature trees on our property at 317 Westlake that are not represented on their site surveys. They've represented the first one. If you do look at the slide, you can kind of see the star in the lower right-hand corner. But there are other trees that have not been represented. And it is a concern, because without that representation, we don't know if they will be protected during construction, that the root system will be maintained, and the trees will not be killed. Another issue is, and forgive me, because I don't know it perfectly, but the distance from the, I guess this would be the southwest corner, if planned north, of the house that will border the right-of-way. I've, I've lived there, so I know how extremely tight that driveway is. Some trucks, like I drive a pickup truck, and I have to bend a mirror in to enter. So the existing structure allows it, and it's actually set further back from that right-of-way edge on 317's boundary line, but the new proposed structure is coming up right to it. So I want to know what the builder is going to do to ensure that that right-of-way is not compromised for vehicle use due to its proximity to the right-of-way. And really beyond that, those are my main concerns, not representing the trees, ensuring the right-of-way is maintained free and clear for use. I don't think you guys deal with during construction, who would, that's bylaw?
That's our building department.
So if, like, they start storing material and everything, that's after the factory?
Yes.
Okay, so then that's not to be brought up today. So those were my main concerns, is the immediate neighbor, proximity to the right-of-way, and what's going to ensure that it won't inhibit vehicle use, and also the permits for the removal of the trees, and what's going to be done to protect our, our trees, some which are not being represented on their plans.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Panel members, do you have any questions? Okay, no questions. If we can have someone else come up, please. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself and your address.
My name is Sean March. I live at 25 Westlake Crescent. So I've reviewed the drawings and the plans and everything provided. It is my belief that this is not a minor variance. The current lot includes one single-family home. It's being divided into two single-family homes, and they're requesting minor variances on both sides. I'm not against development. I recognize that this is important for the city's growth. I feel if the existing lot, if we were maintaining the existing lot and building a second house and there was, or renovating the house and there's a variance, that is completely acceptable. If there were new lots, and we were maintaining the existing house and you need a variance to fit that in, I think that's also acceptable. But to be separating the property and then still requesting variances on both sides, that's pushing the limits of what is appropriate for the neighborhood. The, it breaks the consistency of the pattern of the neighborhood. On Westlake Avenue, it's all houses, frontages, and now it's becoming driveways. This is being broken up and it's changing the impact in the streetscape. The proposed houses are large for the lots, hence the lot coverage and variance requirements, There is an impact to the privacy of adjacent properties, as well as an impact to natural light of the adjacent lots. The, I have some concerns regarding the survey. So the proposed survey that was provided shows a sidewalk on the south side of Westlake Crescent. There is no sidewalk on the south side of Westlake Crescent. There were two trees that were already brought up, so I will skip over that element that were removed. I also believe that the grading information is incomplete on the proposed survey. I don't see many points. I don't understand what's happening. As for the plans, exterior finishes were not provided, so I can't comment and review that information. The front yard soft landscaping does not meet the seventy-five percent minimum, as indicated on the plans provided. The side yard setbacks do not meet the point-nine percent meter setback, as indicated. That information is also incorrect on the drawings provided. They, they say the minimum is point-six. The committee of adjustment application is to build two single-family dwellings. These houses both have large window wells for the basement at the front and separate stairs to the basement at the back. It is very clear to me that these, the intention here is to have two units in these homes. So to move from a single-family home to two, two-unit homes is really increasing the occupancy and density of this lot. And then, as a result, parking is not being taken into consideration, if that is the true intent.
Okay.
Rear yard soft. Rear yard soft landscaping was brought up by Leo. And I believe that because of the coverage, that that's a concern. And safety. So Westlake Crescent is a very narrow street. There is no sidewalk on the south side. There's no parking on the south side. Some work has already commenced on this property and trucks and trailers are routinely parked on the south side, facing the wrong way in a no-parking zone. There are people on the street who use wheel trams from the TTC and I'm concerned about traffic flow and them having access to and from their homes. That's everything I have.
I just have a question. So it seems that there's a very similar type of development. I would say probably three houses down from the site, right? In terms of reversing the frontages onto?
Correct.
Westlake Crescent. So, so how, how do you feel about that in terms of there already being a similar type of development already on the street?
It's been done. It's already there. I understand it. They made a lot of concessions to get those buildings in. I, we went through this process at that time. I feel that these buildings that are proposed haven't adjusted themselves to meet in with the variances. I think there, those two houses were put up. From our side, it looks fine from Westlake Avenue. I think it, you know, it's really changing the streetscape. And if this is a gateway to allow this to happen, all of it, then that street is going to completely change.
If you can, because we weren't there. So if you can talk more about the process. So we went through CVA, those types of, those two developments? Okay, so we'll ask the, okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Sorry, any other questions from?
I, I guess it feeds into the next person answering it, but from what I can see, it was actually severed into three parts rather than two.
Those two properties were severed, that property was severed into?
Looks like I'm showing on this survey, a part one, two, and three. So are there two houses on that or three? Like on, on what?
I have it, yeah.
I think this is already existing, so it was here, I feel.
I was looking at, I'm looking at, it's 315. To the left, it's, if you're facing this property to the left, it looks like they severed, like two are fronting Westlake Crescent and then one is fronting Westlake.
315, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, the one with the circle, but it looks like that was one.
Correct, those were built.
Severed into three parts.
Oh gosh, that's our other neighbor. That was done in the 80s. It was a long time ago. That's been standing for over thirty years.
Just, I'm just looking at the survey, the size of the two pieces on Westlake Crescent look very similar to what's being proposed. Right.
Okay, thank you very much.
And just in relation to your last comment about those two houses that were built at 325, I believe it is, they do not have access to the basement. So they do not have separate access to the basement. They do not have a large window well. So those were not built with the intent of having a basement suite.
Okay, so it's the 325 that's?
Yeah, those are the two that.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll have the next neighbor come up and speak.
My name is Johan Marles. I live on 27 Westlake Crescent.
Okay.
27 Westlake Crescent. This is a little bit of a deja vu moment because we have been here four times over this time with this similar application and with this specific project. So you asked about the background of this specific project. It was denied, denied twice at this very committee, at this very office. And then it was brought to the OMB. And in the OMB, the city that was fully supportive of the neighbors that overwhelmingly opposed the project, witnessed how the OMB override the decision that was made here. So as you can see, we do not oppose the development of the properties. We understand and we are cognizant of the density needs. But this project is an anomaly. It doesn't correspond to the official plan. And the variances that are requested are not minor in nature. Mainly, our main concern is that throughout the process of consulting with the neighbors, even with the plans, there is a, there is a feeling of deception in terms of the plans that are presented to the city because the inaccuracies on the plan that was sent to the city are just staggering. So on that note, we are willing to be participants in the development, but the right kind of development with variances that are not like this, like variances that are really minor in character. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Panel members, do you have questions? Okay, thank you. And anyone else? Nope. Okay, so we'll have the, the, yes, if you can hand those in to the Deputy Secretary of Treasury or member for staff after this application is heard. So Mr. Mastandrea, if you can please respond to the comments.
Yes. When my clients first came to me, they did talk about doing three houses. And I said to them that, you know, I didn't think it was appropriate, that two houses would be better and we could try to meet all variances, which I think we did an amazing job doing. Because our only variance on one of the applications is the side yard setback, which is between our own houses, which exists everywhere there. Believe me, I do a lot of East York projects and I've seen them down to 12 inches. And as far as the one application where we have an extra soft yard, large scape of an extra 4%, that's only because of the right-of-way with our neighbors. We have a hard surface there. We can't touch the right-of-way. So in my opinion, both variances are minor in nature. We comply with the frontage and we comply with the lot area. We comply with the GFA. We comply with the coverage. We comply with two bylaws and we're here for two minor variances. So it's in my opinion that this application is minor and does comply with all four tests.
How about the, the removal of these premature trees?
The trees have permits, yes. And you can make it a condition to forestry clearance. Yes, but I, my client said that, yes, they do have a permit.
Okay, and then the absence of trees on the site plans?
That I'm not too sure about. But again, we do have to deal with forestry. And when we submit applications, we have to follow our plans. As far as what they're talking about, all these mistakes, I'm not too sure about because we usually submit proper and build as per drawings. So you can tie us to the drawings if you like.
Okay, and then in terms of the right-of-way not being compromised?
Well, the right-of-way cannot be compromised because it's a right-of-way. And in a right-of-way, you're not allowed to park there. The right-of-way is for both properties. And our, our application has, is not on the right-of-way. And there's an additional 10 feet before that our property starts to the actual road.
And this is something also that I believe Transportation Services would?
Which they're okay with.
Yeah. Sorry, it doesn't seem so, based on the bylaws, yeah. Okay, I just, I have a question in terms of the existing neighborhood character. So do you have photos showing us?
Yes.
Westlake Crescent and number of houses that are fronting? Like what is that as a street in terms of residence?
This house here is this house here at 323, this one. Can you see that?
Yeah.
Which is two houses from ours. This is the back now. That's similar to what we're going to have, exactly the same. Because then we're changing the front.
But this is going to be from Westlake Avenue?
Correct. And then I have this picture, which is from Westlake Crescent. That's the two houses. So this is very, very similar to what we're proposing. It's almost identical. And the other property that's split into three has, is this one here, where that's the, I think that's the, no, that's the one. Yeah, this is the one on, on the one street. That's the one, the bigger lot, not split into two. And then these two are, I believe it's that one and this one are on the other side, the one, the lot that's split into three. So that, in my opinion, is overdevelopment. But what we're proposing meets most of the bylaws except for two, which is minor in nature because we're all, and in fact, in the old bylaw, it was only two feet. So it does comply. So for that area, for the characteristics, we are complying because characteristics are based on setbacks, heights. And I feel that we are well in compliance with all those. It is appropriate and that's an identical project that's existing today. And in addition, like I said, we're not trying to split it into three. In my opinion, that is overdevelopment. But what we're proposing here today is reasonable.
And so Westlake Crescent, does it have sidewalks?
No, it doesn't. It could have been a typo on the survey that I'm not too sure about.
But there's a number of houses, for example, north of the property that are fronting onto Westlake Crescent?
I have a picture of our back. That's the back of our property. Yeah. That's the back.
That's the back of our property. And so the garage is there, so there's no sidewalk.
But it could have been just a typo from the company. We get the surveys from the company. We don't edit them, we just copy them and we do our thing.
Any other questions?
Did it ask about photos of Westlake Crescent?
Uh, yes.
You can see the houses are on one side, they're set quite far back.
Who is that person making the presentation?
It's a person, the neighbor that spoke previously. Okay, so I can, sorry. I'm asking the neighbors a question in terms of the neighborhood character.
He has a stand. Your job is to keep him there.
Like that's, that's pretty well identical. We, we do comply with the front yard setback. We comply with basically everything. If we make the houses a little bit smaller, basically, we don't even need to be here. But we're here because that extra foot makes a big difference. Because of the, it's in a pie shape, we had to stagger the house. And the variance is between our own buildings. So it's not affecting any neighbors.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, so now we're in committee. Discussion, well, I, I just, I would like to start by saying,
I mean, first of all, I, I am sympathetic to all the concerns raised by the neighbors. Having said that, there is no variance here for lot area, for lot frontage. So in terms of the consent, the lots comply with, with the bylaw. In terms of the variances, I would have to agree with the applicant. I mean, we, we approved one earlier where the, you know, this, to minimize impact on existing homes, the, the new homes were pushed closer together, which is the case here as well. The variances are not for the existing homes to either side. It's for the new homes. So I think that, that that's a good thing to mitigate not having a variance for the houses that are existing on either side of the new development. And I would submit that in terms of the actual variance we're looking at, that for landscaping is, is in my opinion, minor in terms of what this committee looks at.
Unfortunately, that's, that's a reality and I, and I have to agree with Ms. Omen on this.
I mean, yeah, I agree with you in terms of the actual variances. But then, like one of our decision-making criteria is that the development or the proposal has to be appropriate and desirable for the neighborhood and for the, for the lot. And I would question if this is actually desirable for, for that lot and for that neighborhood in terms of changing the frontage of the houses from, from a street that's well-served, Westlake Avenue, to putting it at Westlake Crescent that doesn't have sidewalks. To me, it seems that, this is a very clever way to, to, to meet the bylaws by doing this reversal. We have the, the houses on Westlake Crescent rather than Westlake Avenue. And I would argue that it does change the character of Westlake Avenue in terms of putting garages and parking pads, or in this case, it was parking pads, fronting onto Westlake Avenue rather than Westlake Crescent and having the houses on Westlake Crescent.
When you look at it, I don't know.
In terms of the variances, I would agree that I have issues with character in terms of the reversal. But my actual issue with this application is the consent. Yes, the lots are compliant with the bylaw dimensions, but I don't think this is in keeping with the, with the consistent lot form. We have, yes, we have one spot with what appear to be somewhat larger lots that has been split and split three ways at that. This, that is not a consistent feature of the area, though. And I don't think that the lots this narrow are appropriate.
Okay, panel members, any other comments? Okay, no more comments, I'll need a motion.
Okay, I'll try it. I would move refusal of the consent as I don't believe that it represents a consistent lot form.
Okay, so a motion to refuse the consent has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Do we have a seconder? Okay, so I can't vote because I have to abstain, right? Otherwise, it would be a tie. So that motion fails. Okay, so I'll need another motion.
For you, Madam Chair, I would move approval of the application, including the conditions in the planning report dated November 1st and the standard consent condition. Sure. Fine, yeah, yeah, because it's about the landscaping and permeable pavers.
Okay, so a motion to approve the, the both the consent and the various variance, sorry, can, the application has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
Second.
Second, Mr. Russell, all in favor? Okay, dissenting. Okay, Mr. Carlson is dissenting and I abstain to avoid a tie. Okay, so the, the variance and the consent application has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out. We move forward with item number? Number 40, 24 Hopedale Avenue. If we can have the agent applicant please come up. Okay, so before we proceed, and if we can have the parties in interest also come up and be seated on my left-hand side. So before we proceed, the committee has in front of us a copy of the minutes from the February 14th public hearing and the materials submitted for consideration. We have a plan of survey, revised site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a staff report from community planning dated November 2nd. We have correspondents in concern from 22 Hopedale Avenue and then we have correspondents in opposition from 26 Hopedale, is it Hopedale? Hopedale Avenue as well. Sorry, I think it's 26 Hop, Hopton.
Hopedale, Hopedale.
Hopedale? Okay, I think there is a spelling mistake then in my notes. I, I think there is a spelling mistake then, in my notes.
Yeah, there's no Hope Ton.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Stavros Teterakopoulos, engineer and agent for the owner. So we, as you're aware, it's a deferred application. We've made some changes to the plans, basically building back to what it was originally. So the rear addition is the footprint of the existing rear one-story addition, eliminating the second-floor addition back. And the only additional square footage to the house is the front vestibule, which was existing enclosed, is going to be changed to part of the existing house. That's the existing front vestibule. It's basically just a doorway, part of the interior house now. So I've read, I've read the planning staff report, and I've seen their recommendations. I have no problem with their tying it to the area of the garage, coverage-wise. The variances that we're requesting are basically existing conditions for the coverage, and the only one that's increasing is the GFA due to that small front vestibule being added. The sideyard setback is an existing condition.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions? If not, we'll, we'll have you step down. We'll have the party in concern, please come up, introduce themselves and their address, and state their concerns.
Hi, sorry, my name is Drew Boita. I reside at 26 Hope Dale Avenue, which is the property just to the right there, the north. So we do appreciate, obviously, the changes that were made to the plan from the original deferred meeting. We do see that the second-floor extension had been cut back. We do see that the front porch will now be uncovered, so we appreciate those changes. Just a couple of concerns I wanted to, to make note of. I did provide them in my submitted copy, but there is a tree on the back property line between 24 and 26. It is pretty much growing, the fence and the tree are growing together now, is how long it's been there. The tree has a diameter of 54 inches. It's within 3.6 meters of the proposed construction. We did speak with the city. We talked about the tree protection and plan review. They provided us some guidelines regarding what would need to be considered with construction that close of a tree of that size. My only ask would be that, to have that tree reviewed, to make sure that if it does require protection, that it is protected. It is our only source of shade in the backyard on that side. It's quite a large tree, it's been there a long time, and does provide us with some privacy. There is a proposed Juliet balcony to be included in this. The only concern we have with that is we just don't ever want that first-floor addition, since it is, has been increased from what was there before. I think it was eight feet, it's now been improved to nine feet, which is in line with that balcony. We just don't want ever that to be turned into a walkout of some kind. So we would ask for maybe windows to be installed as opposed to a Juliet balcony door. Just restricts the ease in which perhaps that could be changed or proposed down the road. It would require greater changes, maybe it's a deterrent of some kind. The footprint, so we, we just wanted to say we support the planning. Note, this is a city support planning report that was, that was submitted, in that if the garage were ever to be demolished, that the footage should not be changed or cannot be expanded of the proposed dwelling. Outside of that, like I said, anything that will be done will be an improvement to what is currently there. We fully support the application in the event that these concerns can be addressed.
Okay, and just to clarify, so we do have a suggestion from community planning to include a condition in regards to the lot coverage?
Yes.
Make sure that it, it does stick to 39.76%.
Correct. Yeah, we support that suggestion.
Okay, any questions, panel members?
So basically, you just want this to be a window?
Yeah.
But it can still have the grill in front of it, kind of have this look...
Yeah, have a grill in front of it, same, same look. I just find it's more of a deterrent to have a, a window as opposed to a door, perhaps.
Okay, so we'll have the agent come up and respond to the, the various concerns.
Okay, so with regards to the tree, number one, we don't anticipate having to do any damage to the tree. We're not excavating. If there's a forestry condition, we can, you know, put a tree-protection fence. If we need to trim it, we'll have to get a, a permit to injure.
Is the tree identified on the site plan?
It's not on the site plan. I believe it's on the latest survey.
Okay, because we don't have urban forestry condition.
Yeah, it's, it's, some of the branches are overhanging that one-story addition, so I don't anticipate it, it will require anything. I guess that's why they didn't make it a condition, because there's no excavation either on this job.
Okay.
Can we make him, the application, that they have to make an application to urban forestry?
I'm, I'm looking at the conditions, and typically, an application for a permit to injure or remove privately-owned trees, or...
Yeah.
Well, this, this, the intention of the application is not to injure.
We have no, yeah, the, the owner doesn't want to remove the tree. He likes it too, so...
So this only specifies if he do, like, it addresses concerns whether or not it's existent or not?
With respect to the, with respect to the balcony, we're not applying for a second-floor balcony. The bylaw permits a four-square-meter platform, so someone in the future could put a balcony without coming to committee, about eight feet by six feet, for example. We have no intention of making it a full balcony, so whether it's a door or a window, I don't... Like, we're not, there's a, there's a railing in front, so we're not providing access to that roof.
No questions, no? Okay, so we're in committee, discussion?
I guess my only concern was to ensure that we didn't, we had something in place for the tree. I don't know, Madam Secretary, if we needed to have any decision that says that an application has to be made by for, to forestry to ensure the trees are protected? No. So we don't need, I guess we can't do anything?
Through the... But through the building process, are they not required to protect the tree? Like, at the back, I don't know how close you're constructing it, like the, the fencing? Right.
Okay.
The fencing and all that stuff.
All right.
How about the, the balcony versus the window, window versus...
Sorry. He says, like he says, he still has, he's allowed to build four-square-feet, four-square-meters. Yeah, so I did... At this point, it is no application here.
Okay, panel members, any other comments or questions? If not, I need a motion.
I move for approval, it's, it's truly mine, I mean, it meets the four tests.
Including the planning conditions outlined in the November 1st report?
Yes.
Okay, a motion to approve has been moved by Mr. Russell, including the planning conditions. Do we have a second there? Okay, second, Mr. Carlson, all in favor? So the application's been approved. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming out. So the hearing is adjourned at 5:10, 5:08, it's up to you.
No, it's...
I'm gonna round it.
It's five and a half.
Okay.